We need a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Trustee Craig, I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Obad, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Out of executive session. Please staff and fight. Trustee Obad.
Leading us to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do roll call, this is called, I do want to apologize for the lateness of coming out of executive sessions. And we do appreciate your patience. Thank you for being here tonight. Roll call.
Trustee Craig?
Here.
Trustee Fiegel?
Here.
Trustee Pear?
Here.
Trustee Obad?
Here.
Trustee Pratt?
Here.
Trustee Sandel?
Here.
Trustee Schrader?
She's excused.
Trustee Young?
Here.
President Linderman?
Here.
Next item on our agenda tonight, we have the mission statement. Ms. Schrader.
March is the month that spring officially begins, however, we may not know it from the weather we've been experiencing. In addition, during the month of March, the following areas relating to education have been recognized in some manner. Music in Our Schools Month, Women's History Month, Youth Art Month, Optimism Month, National Social Workers Month, and Expanding Girls Horizons in Science and Engineering Month. The following days are also recognized in March. Plant a Flower Day was March 12th, St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, International Earth Day, March 20th, and Take a Walk in the Park Day, March 30th. And finally, the New York State Technology and Engineering Educators Association proclaimed the week of March 18th to March 23rd, Technology and Engineering Week. Given this, we have two students in attendance this evening representing Emmett Belknap Intermediate School. With the guidance of their technology teacher, Mr. Lieber, who was very sad he could not be here to see their work, we have Taylor Fiegel and Julia Flynn. They're both sixth grade students of Mrs. Everhart and Mr. Krangle, and they have prepared for us a very brief demonstration in honor of Technology and Engineering Week. They will be highlighting their experiences with coding, I believe. And this is a topic that this Board of Education is going to hear a little bit more about at our next meeting. So it'll be a preview for you for that. And then, once the girls have shared their thoughts, they're going to read the mission statement for us. So when you're ready, girls, you can start.
This is Ollie. It has a new look. It's going to go with any color. It's challenging.
I did hour code editing pictures in computer club in fifth grade. It was fun but easy. I have a 3D printer at home and in fourth grade in my class, I can use one. I read the Khan Academy coding page and watched an interesting video. I learned a lot of new things about coding with it. I did robotics club with Mr. Lieber in fifth grade and learned a lot about the life of robots and had a lot of fun. I did computer club and went with hour code editing pictures. The white and blue robot is Ollie. Ollie is new this year. You could drag it with the iPad. You could also draw with the iPad and you could block code it. I worked on Ollie drive, draw, and block, but it was inaccurate and failed a lot. But we learned from that. Like, the end result was different every time, even though we changed the code a lot. But in the end, I had a lot of fun trying. During class, while Julia and I were working on Ollie, Mr. Lieber showed me Scratch and I learned how to use coding. I learned how to code using the Sprites. Scratch is very similar to Hour Code but a little harder. I use the Lego robot Jared. Jared is a lot easier, reliable, and more accurate than Ollie. Jared is a lot more fun than Ollie and succeeded a lot more. I think Ollie is good for kids to learn because they can realize that things are not always going to work in their coding. I think using Lego robots are good for kids to learn because they're reliable and they follow the codes every time and are very good to use.
We believe all people can learn. Schools create conditions for success academically, socially, emotionally, physically, and aesthetically. Teaching and learning are the shared responsibilities of homeschooling and community. Our mission is to ensure comprehensive learning for all so that each person will be a lifelong learner.
So Taylor and Julia, it sounds, I've heard the word "coding" used quite a bit, and I also heard the word "fun" used quite a bit. So are you enjoying your experiences with computer science and coding and technology?
Yes.
Yes. Do you have any future plans? Have you thought about your future careers or where you might plan to go?
Yeah, I want to make hands with my 3D printer for people.
And I want to be a pediatrician.
So lots of technology in both of those fields, right? That's great. Thank you both for being here tonight. Who did you bring with you? What family members?
Um, it's my mom.
My mom and my brother.
Mom and your brother. Thank you for being here. We're proud that you're great representatives of all that we're doing in Lockport with our technology, and we hope to be able to continue to offer you many more experiences with technology. Thanks for being here tonight, and we look forward to seeing you continue to learn.
Thank you.
You have a good recess.
The next item on our agenda tonight is we have a public forum for items on our agenda. We have one speaker tonight. I do ask the speaker to go to the microphone, state their name, address, and the topic they're speaking on. Our speaker is Mr. Schultz. That's me. Mr. Schultz, good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. Can you hear me? The microphone's a little low.
My name is Jim Schultz, and I live at 11 Continental Drive.
I am a parent of a freshman at Lockport High School, Mariana Schultz, who's hiding out in the back row. And I'm here to speak about the Smart School Bond item on the agenda. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the members of the board and to the superintendent. This is our first year in the Lockport schools, and we love the Lockport schools. Mariana's having an absolutely awesome year at Lockport High School. The teachers are great, the principal's great, the school is great. So thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the fact that you're concerned about school security. I mean, this is the issue of the year. We are all concerned about school security, and we entrust you every morning, five days a week, with the treasures of this community, and that's why it's so important. And that's why I think it's important we talk about the district's plan on school security. It is extremely important, I think, for all of us that it be a smart and effective plan. I don't think there's any issues with strengthening doors, with improving access of who gets in, who gets out. But this issue of the high-tech facial recognition and shape recognition system, I think, raises a whole host of questions, and I just want to briefly touch on three that I think are fundamental. One is, if you look at the company's website that is pushing this plan, it boasts about how it's going to be able to sort of find the bad guys before they come in to get to the school, and that it's going to find the guns before they get into the school. And that sounds really great, except a system like that is only as good as its database. And so, if the bad guys we're looking for aren't on the database, it really doesn't make any difference. And if you look at who's been involved in the school shootings, Sandy Hook, Columbine, none of those people would have been on any of these databases. In terms of shape recognition, it sounds great that anybody comes around with an AR-15 is going to get spotted, but I'm concerned that we have a $3 million system that can be undone by a $15 backpack from Walmart. Unless it has X-ray vision, I think there's no questions technically about this system. Secondly, it's really important, obviously, none of us are security experts. We need to be guided by people who are security experts, and they need to be impartial. And we have a situation here, according to the reporting by the paper in the district's comments, of a consultant who has a financial and consulting relationship with the company. He may have great expertise, but if I work at a Toyota dealership and you ask me what kind of car to buy, I'm not going to tell you to buy a Chevy. And second, and this is really important, the district has said to the state in writing as a basis for receiving this funding that it has consulted with check-the-box students, check-the-box teachers, check-the-box members of the community, check-the-box parents. And yet, in searching through to figure out what that consultation looked like, the only thing on the record in the school district is that it had a board meeting in the middle of August in 2016 at 4:30 in the afternoon, when everybody was on vacation, and nobody spoke, and there were no comments, which I don't think really qualifies as consultation. The head of the Educators Association was quoted in the paper saying that they were never talked to. So, and I think this is important, not just because it's important to solicit people's views, who are going to be living with the system, but because the funding that the district is getting ready to spend is based on a legal requirement of that consultation. And I, for one, as a board member, would not want to be signing onto a contract that's on shaky legal footing because the consultations represented were not fully done. So, I understand how we probably got here. You care about school security. You started looking after Sandy Hook for a way to do something about it, and the district doesn't have a lot of extra money lying around. And here comes this $4.2 million gift from heaven in the Smart School Bond for technology education, and somebody came along and told you that you could solve this with a technological solution. And that's what the district is doing. And what I find particularly disturbing is this company has targeted New York schools. If you look at its website, it said, "Our market is the 14,800 public schools in New York, and we're developing a system for that." They pitched it to a whole bunch of schools, 40 schools, evidently four signed on, four districts signed on to sort of be the beta test. One school district. One school district in New York has signed on for this plan at a cost of about $3 million, and that's Lockport. I just think a small district like this, that's already strapped for money, really can't afford to be a lab rat for a technology that is untested. And I think that is enough of a question here that it's important to not approve any kind of contracting for this technology tonight. Open it up, have the kinds of consultations. It's not hard to find teachers and students to talk to. I mean, a whole bunch of them, by the thousands, are over here at Lockport High School five days a week. It's time, I think, to talk to the students, talk to the teachers, come up with a plan that makes common sense. You can do the things now, like reinforce the doors and the rest. That's just common sense. But this technology, I really think there are a lot of questions that need to be answered. Because the bottom line is, we all care about the same thing. I mean, I care a lot, as all of you do, about the security of our kids. We really need to do this right. We really need to do this right. And I think there are enough questions around this that we need to open it up, take our time, take another month, take another two months, and really try to get into this and figure out what the best course is. Because we don't know an awful lot about this technology and what it does. One thing we do know about it, it's a really good way to suck money out of the school district budget. $3 million is a lot of money that could have been used on other things for security or technology education. How much is it going to cost every year? Technology systems, you don't park them. You've got to update them, you've got to renovate them, you've got to deal with them. You need people to do that. They cost money. I would love to know what the system's going to cost us over the next 10 years. So, that's my point that I have tonight. I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda tonight is, we do have a discussion item on the 2018-2019 budget.
Sure. Thank you, President Linderman. This evening, I believe we're on the eve of a state budget being presented through the governor's office. We've heard today that Governor Cuomo expects to release his budget for the state. The deadline is April 1st. But April 1st, as we know, is Easter Sunday. So, the talk has been that the elected officials would like to get the budget out prior to the religious observances, and it were Fool's Day. So, with that, we're going to present tonight what our budget looks like for the Lockport City School District. Couple goals that we had in building the budget for the 2018-19 school year include maintaining programs for students in the district along with personnel. Another goal was to live within our tax levy cap calculation. Both of those things, we believe, we will be able to accomplish with the budget in 2018-19. You'll also hear this evening that we're taking a look at adding positions in the district, primarily to be in compliance with stated regulations and mandates from the State Education Department, along with improving student support services to the diverse population of students that we have, K through 12. So with that, Ms. Carter is going to present. You have a copy of the power from your seats. For the audience, the presentation slides will be on the board so that you two can follow.
Thank you, Superintendent Bradley. Good evening, Board of Education trustees, and good evening to the public that's here with us tonight and to my audience at home. Welcome. This is the 2018-19 budget update. The district goals are to preserve programs that will allow students to meet graduation requirements and be college and career-ready, and to adhere to the property tax cap limit. The budget status for, budget status as of today, the instructional programs for students will be maintained, and the increasing diverse needs of students will be better addressed. The recommended expenditure budget will not exceed the property tax cap limit of $758,796. There are pending concerns on how much state aid in the form of foundation aid that the district will actually receive. Reputable sources cite that the governor will release the approved budget on March 29th, 2018. With the New York State budget passage impact, looking at prior-year analytics, it is projected that the passage of the New York State budget should include an increase to the district's foundation aid. While the exact dollar amount is not known, the district is hopeful to receive an increase of at least $500,000 to help offset the usage of appropriated fund balance to enhance educational programs. The foundation aid in January of 2018 was $35,712,774. The minimum foundation aid hoped for is $36,212,774, a potential increase to foundation aid of $500,000. We will, of course, take anything above that also. So what are the adjustments in the budget before the Board of Education this evening? Expenditure and appropriated fund balance reductions made between February 7th, 2018, and March 27th, 2018 totaled $2,166,964. Retirement salary savings amounted to $777,457. Revised estimates for vendor and contractual obligations totaled $890,300. And potential usage of appropriated fund balance totaled $499,207. Now, staffing additions to the budget will total $499,207. So there is a net expenditure reduction of $1,667,757. Retirements include, with the LEA positions, which are teachers' union, which encompasses teachers, teaching assistants, CODAs, which are certified occupational therapy assistants and nurses. There will be 14 teacher retirements. LASSA positions, which is the administrators' union of principals, assistant principals, and directors, there will be one principal retirement. LSEA, which is the Lockport Support Union, consisting of custodians, secretaries, and teacher aides, there will be two secretary retirements. To meet the increasing diverse needs of our students, other staffing adjustments will include the addition of one elementary physical education teacher, one teacher of English to speakers of other languages, one elementary school counselor position, one committee on special education chairperson for agency placements, one teaching assistant, four teacher aides, one school secretary, one part-time nurse, and one part-time security person. The result is a reduction in expenditures, and with a positive attitude towards a potential state aid increase, coupled with the usage of appropriated fund balance from this year's budget, the district would be able to maintain current programs and continue to address the diverse needs of our students. Next steps, the Board of Education can adopt a current proposed expenditure budget before you of $99,284,670 on Wednesday, April 11th, 2018, with a tax levy increase of no more than $758,796, or 2.015%, which is your tax levy limit calculation. The budget-to-budget increase would be $2,466,203, or 2.55% over this year's current spending. To give you a brief summary, the proposed expenditure budget is $99,284,670. The projected revenue budget is $58,574,621. The 2018-19 tax levy requested is $38,417,272. The 2017-18 current tax levy is $37,658,476, for a tax levy increase at 2.015% of $758,796. Superintendent Bradley, that ends the overview.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. President Linderman, I'll turn it back to you for a discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. I'm opening up the discussion to the board. Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have a question?
Sure.
So if we get more money from the state, which we're hopeful, where does that go? The money would go in the revenue side in the appropriated fund balance. So, we actually, with adding additional positions, we've, every budget builds in buffer for unforeseen emergencies. And if we don't need that buffer, we give it back the following tax year to the taxpayers, and it's called appropriated fund balance. So, right now, we're using $499,000 of what I built in to give back to the taxpayers next year. If we do receive at least that half a million dollars, I won't have to, I won't have to next year say, "We cannot give you back as much money." So, or unless something disastrous happens, but hopefully not.
Trustee Obad.
So it looks like 14 teachers retired, but we're only hiring about 12. So the retirement should be filled out, or?
There, there was a review of all the staffing. There are some areas that do not need replacement teachers. That do not need replacement teachers. So it is like, that helped keep the new hires that net affected the $499,000.
The positions that Mrs. Carter just mentioned are new positions.
Yes, so, just to clarify, it says 14 teacher retirements. They're not all teachers, they're within the LEA.
Those categories that were mentioned.
Correct.
Two of the new hires are part-time, and eight of them are FT, and was the chairperson, which might be an already existing faculty member that may assume to take that appointment.
Also, before you this evening, I have given you updated documents at your seats for your budget books. It's the latest budget adjustment worksheet showing where you are currently and that you have your tax levy limit calculation. You also have an updated revenue sheet. I highlighted those areas in yellow on what has changed since your last meeting. And then, I've given you another summary breakout by function code, location, and object for your books, just so you can see where the heaviest spending is in our budget. You will notice it is on salaries and it is on benefits. That's, we are a human business, and that's where the bulk of the increases are.
Further question?
I just have one. The talk out of Portland is that, kind of budget is finalized, that there will be a further increase in schools.
Yes. They're out there saying they're going to release, oh, what was it? $9 billion? A billion dollars.
So we can expect an increase?
I do expect, in the past analytics, they, based on your formula, your poverty level, we're, I'm confident, we are hopeful that we will get at least the half a million dollars. If we receive more, that's a wonderful thing. It just helps us to enhance our programming next year on things we may want to add or offer different programs and do for our students. So that would be wonderful if we could get that money.
Trustee Young.
Just one more. So the money that we'll be getting as foundation aid, is that restricted, or restricted in what we can spend it on?
No, it actually can go to anything in the general fund budget. It's not like transportation aid or building aid or housing aid. It can be used for anything within the district. That the Board of Education approves of.
That's correct.
Yes, the original appropriation was about $750 million. And that was when they started the discussions, and we were always mindful that maybe it would go up a little bit, because I know the board regents had requested 1.5 billion. So, I think, at the end of the day, you know, we're seeing at least a little bit of an increase. So hopefully, if they pass it tomorrow, we get some good news, then we should be in really good shape. So I appreciate that work. I also want to say that to the staffing issue, we do do an exhaustive review with the senior staff on class sizes, keeping them appropriate for teachers at all grade levels. So we really do the deep dive on whether or not, based on enrollments, and certainly enrollment projections, we don't know what we're going to get in kindergarten or new people moving into the district. And I want people to recognize that East Aurora is in a little bit of a pickle themselves because they got like 15 or 20 special ed students during their school year this past year that they didn't anticipate. And now, as a result of that, costs for certain special ed students are, can be astronomical, you know? So, they got into a little pickle because they didn't build enough buffer, and now they have to meet those, those needs of students based on a budget that was appropriated for them, with not a lot of wiggle room. So, certainly by having some of that in our district, it at least allows us to be able to be mindful of not only class size, but certainly giving us a little bit of buffer room to help any new students that we give into the district. We got quite a few this year that were part of the Puerto Rican flood disaster and those types of things. So we may see some of that continue into this year. There's still places in Puerto Rico that still don't have electricity. So, I mean, those things may come to pass over the summer. Is that right?
Yes, that's right. And we do take a look at enrollment. This year, we were able to have relatively small kindergarten classrooms. We are looking to maintain that. We received feedback from teachers that having the class sizes at kindergarten that we did was very beneficial for students. The other elementary grade sections, we believe, are very reasonable. And we're trying to also balance it out across the district, so there isn't one building with much lower class sizes than another building. So we're taking a look at all those things and then anticipating any increases in students with disabilities and students from other countries too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Further questions?
So, President Linderman, on April 11th, and the Board of Education will be acting to adopt the budget.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Carter. The next item on our agenda tonight is we need the approval of tonight's agenda as it stands before us, and minutes' approval. I need a motion for the approval of tonight's proposed agenda. Motion, please. Trustee Obad, second. Trustee Pratt, third. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I now need a motion for the approval of the proposed minutes for the work session meeting of February 7th, 2018, and the regular meeting of February 28th, 2018. Motion, please.
So move.
Trustee Craig, I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Obad, third. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on our agenda tonight, we have action items. I'm going to break from the normal routine tonight. We've had a speaker speak about number eight, rewarding the contracts for the Smart Schools project. I would like to have further discussion on that. So what I am asking for, under a business matter, a motion to approve one through seven and nine through 12.
So?
Motion, Trustee Obad, second. Trustee Sandel, third. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now, under business matters number eight, rewarding contracts for the Smart Schools project, I need a motion, please. Trustee Sandel, I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Obat, I am now opening up to discussion. I would like to begin that discussion with Mrs. Speaker, providing information from August 2016 conference hearing.
I don't know. Take it.
To the states. Everyone should have a copy.
So President Linderman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, again, thank you, everybody. There's been... There's been some questions raised, and the Board of Education felt it would be prudent to revisit the public hearing that was held on August 17 of 2016 to go over what the criteria was and what the school district proposed at that time during the public hearing. So I'm just going to go through it, just so everybody has the framework on where the Board of Education was back then. So the Smart Schools Bond Act was passed as part of the 2014-15 New York State budget and approved by the voters in a statewide referendum that was held on November 4 of 2014. The Smart Schools Bond Act referendum authorized the issuance of $2 billion in bonds to finance educational technology and infrastructure to improve learning opportunities for students throughout the state. The Lockport City School District was allocated $4,274,931. This means the state will reimburse the district for 100% of its expenses as identified in the Lockport Smart School Investment Plan. The application consists of two basic elements: an investment plan overview and separate pages for each of the allowable project types. Project types are for school connectivity, to connect school buildings to high-speed broadband; community connectivity, to expand learning outside of the school day and building; learning technology or devices, to acquire learning technology equipment for devices; pre-kindergarten classrooms, to construct, enhance, or modernize education facilities; replacing transportable classrooms, to expand or construct permanent instructional space to replace transportable classroom units; and high-tech security, to install high-tech security features in school buildings and on school campuses. This plan earmarks the majority of the district allocation to support district-wide security upgrades in alignment with our strategic planning process and our long-range facilities plan. There are six project scope items totaling $3,967,083. Scope item number one is to update secure vestibule windows. This item includes replacing main entrance screeder windows with bulletproof bank teller-style windows. The smart bond allocation used is projected to be $19,688. Scope item number two is to update and install exterior wireless and network hardware. The additional wireless coverage will extend the district's network capabilities to areas outside of the buildings. The network hardware additions are needed to support the additional cameras, wireless access, and mass notification devices. The smart bond allocation used is projected to be $200,000. Scope item number three, to install video surveillance with video analytics. This includes installing 300 new cameras across the district. It also includes the addition of object and face recognition video analytics to the existing surveillance system. Smart bond allocation used is projected to be $2,746,082. Scope item number four, provide access control for elementary. This includes adding current access to one location. This location will also receive a door replacement to ensure a secure entrance to the building. Smart bond allocation used is projected to be $19,688. Scope item number five, purchase a visitor badging system. This system uses technology to scan visitor licenses and will print a temporary badge that includes the visitor's license information. This capability will be added to each school and the district office. Smart bond allocation used is projected to be $22,500. Scope item number six, purchase mass notification lockout systems. The systems will replace the existing PA systems in all schools except the high school. The systems will include automated lockdown capabilities, including activating blue strobes, disabling card readers, making an automated announcement, dropping fire doors, and contacting local authorities. Smart bond allocation used is projected to be $959,125. What were the next steps? The proposed project plan was submitted for approval in September 2016. There is no voter referendum required. Once approval is received, the district will seek competitive bids where required. Anticipated completion of this project is September 1, 2018. President Linderman, there was then an opportunity for a public forum. There were no speakers at that public hearing on the Smart School Bond Project. The bid opening for this project was on Tuesday, March 13, 2018, and you do have before you the result of a motion to approve the lowest bidder as per New York State guidelines. So I turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for discussion. The local newspaper, the Union Sun, has had several articles regarding this project. This project is two years in the making. The Board has spent considerable amount of time. Just to understand that the project was submitted to State Ed, and we could not move forward until State Ed okayed it. So we have been approved by State Ed to move forward with this project. And with that, I'm going to open it up for discussion to the board. We have several members with us tonight that can answer questions and hopefully give us...
President Linderman, would you like me to introduce them with their titles?
Yes, why don't you do that?
For our audience and at home. Our first guest is Matt Kreider. He works with ECC Technologies. Matt worked with our architect Troutman Associates. He put together and worked very closely with our Director of Technology to put together our Smart Schools plan. Our next guest is Mr. Tony Olivo. He is with Corporate Screening Investigative Group. Tony is our security consultant. He does not charge us anything to give us advice, but Tony is here also to answer any questions. Our third guest is our attorney from Hudson Russ, Mr. Justin Whitek. He is here just to answer any legal questions the Board of Education may have. And finally, our last guest is Dr. Robert La Puma. He is the district's Director of Technology, and he also conducted many of the interactions with the community and the public as he developed our technology plan and worked with Matt on the Smart Schools project.
I would like to just open it up. There's been some question about Mr. Olivo's involvement in this project and, you know, what is he getting out of this? Mr. Olivo reached out to the school district. The school district did not reach out to him. He contacted, I think it was 44 schools within the state. Lockport was one that reached out to him. He provided free consultation to this district. Mr. Olivo, I'd just like you to just answer the first question that people or the newspapers questioned, your financial reimbursement.
Thank you. As the Board has stated, I reached out to the school district in 2012 after the tragedy at Sandy Hook and offered to do free security assessments for several different school districts, not just Lockport. Lockport just happened to be one of the three that took us up on it. So during that course of time, we've worked together significantly to increase the security at Lockport schools. And in 2015, I became aware of this technology, as I told the board, at an anti-terrorism conference up in Toronto. I know it may seem that this technology is brand-new, but it's not. It's in use all over Europe. This technology is used by Interpol, Scotland Yard, the French Ministry of Defense, the Palace of Monaco. It's being used all over Europe to combat terrorism. So when I saw these gentlemen, I approached them, and I asked them if they had a program like this for school districts. And quite frankly, they looked at me like I had three heads because they don't have these issues outside the United States, sadly. So over the course of the past three years, we've worked together collaboratively to develop this technology for use in our schools, which is something I'm very passionate about because I'm a father first. And yes, I do have a financial interest in this in that the company pays me as a consultant to help them develop this technology and strategically deploy it. It's not only deployed at Lockport. I know there were commentaries earlier about Lockport being the only school. I'll assure you that Lockport is not the only school. They just happen to be the first ones that have got their Smart Schools funding approval. There are several others. The process takes at least two years to do. So there are a lot of other schools in the pipeline.
Thank you. Trustee Sandell.
Yeah, a couple things. One is, I wanted to be clear that this money that's allocated is 100% reimbursable. So in other words, when we spend the money, then we apply for reimbursement, and we get 100% of that back. Is that correct?
That is correct. As long as we follow the Smart School plan that the advisory board approved, as long as we spend it on exactly what we said we would spend it on, we have to pay for it, and then we submit our council checks to New York State, and they will cut us a check.
So when you say that it's going to cost the district... It doesn't cost the district specifically. It's from this referendum.
That's correct. And actually, and it is a large amount of money. So thank you for actually bringing that up and just addressed. So the district does have a capital reserve. And one of the items with the Smart Schools Bond Act, they said you could actually borrow against your capital reserve rather than having to go out and borrow money to pay for it. So if you had money in your capital reserve, you could borrow it, pay for your project, and then when your reimbursement came in, you could pay it back. And I did run that to our bond counsel for Hudson Russ. So yes, Jeff, I did. It's the other partner, yes. So, and the Board of Education did approve that resolution to be... You had to approve a special resolution to borrow money out of your capital reserve to pay for this project, and once we're reimbursed, it goes back in.
And the second point I want to make, could you go back to the very first slide that showed what you could spend it on?
Yes, sir.
That one, yeah, that one. And could you, I know we reviewed this earlier, but could you kind of go over what we're spending on, what we're not, because of what we qualified for?
Absolutely. And if you don't mind, I'd like to bring Dr. Robert La Puma up here because he was instrumental in 2014 in building the bathroom. So, Dr. La Puma, if you could speak to our school connectivity, our learning devices, our learning technology, please?
Sure. So there's basically four things that we could have spent this money on. So the first one, these first two are connectivity. We had just finished, or were in the process at the time, of actually going through a capital project to rebuild our network. So we were doing what the state was encouraging school districts to do with this money, this first item, and that was one of the ones that the governor really promoted, was wanted to see rural schools be connected with broadband technology. So we had already had a capital project that was approved. That project is now complete. We have 10 gigabit connections between all of our buildings. We have good speed to all of our classrooms. We have wireless throughout all of our buildings. So when we saw this as a possible option for Smart Schools funding, that didn't make a whole lot of sense in Lockport, so ruled those two out. Technology devices, the Board is very much aware, but I'll just kind of go over, over the past six, seven, seven years now, over the past seven years, we have been initiating a technology project for one-to-one technology with all of our schools or a bring-your-own-device-type environment at our high school. So we have iPads K through 6 for every single student. We implemented that over a four-year period and then went to our six and our seven and eight buildings, implemented one-to-one Chromebooks at the middle schools, which is all part of a plan to have exposure to different types of technology: Mac technology, tablet technology, Chromebook technology, Windows technology. So if you go to school in Lockport K through 12, it's not a school district where you're going to be exposed to just Chromebooks K through 12 because that's the cheapest piece of technology. It's a... It's a plan for public schools to provide access to different types of technology. So when you graduate from Lockport, you've had some exposure to all these different types of technology. Our one-to-one program was innovative. It's gotten national recognition for its effectiveness. It's gotten national recognition for its fiscal responsibility. We presented on this in several conferences across the state and also nationally. And we've had people from all different cities and regions across New York State, but I think from 16 different states also, come to Lockport to actually see our programs in action with our students. So it's something that we're very proud of. Maybe I took too much time talking about that. We're very proud of that, and it didn't make a whole lot of sense to be investing in more technology that we were already using really effectively and we're kind of at a maintenance point at right now.
I can do the other two if you want.
Pre-kindergarten classrooms, we already have a building, John Town Building, that houses our preschool program in collaboration with the YWCA. Wasn't a real good viable option here. We don't have transportable classrooms in the district, so we focused on high-tech security and it became part of our discussion for using this allocation. So that's what initiated the talks. I don't know if I want to go further.
Well, and we did know because of the price take, because of the price take, our general fund could not support that. So when we saw the Smart School Bond Act, and we worked at this, and looking at what we'd already accomplished, the thing that made the most sense was the high-tech security, especially after what happened with Sandy Hook and what we're seeing now in today's society, unfortunately, with what's going on in the schools. So that was the focus. And Dr. La Puma, I know you met with many community stakeholders through your technology plan. Do you want to address that at all?
So, sure. And I know it's complicated, and it may not make a whole lot of sense without really knowing all the details of how the school district works, how we are responsible for doing a technology plan. So a requirement to put in our Smart School application was that we have a technology plan, which we've had since I've been here over 15 years. The technology plan is a three-year plan for what we're going to do with our technology. It was a requirement for our Smart Schools application that we have had a technology plan in place. So with that technology plan, we met with all stakeholders over several meetings about technology. But you have to keep in mind, at the time we're meeting about our technology, our development, the Smart Schools initiative was just coming out. So discussions we had was about technology in general, what our needs were. You can't think about these meetings and the information that you have today because that's developed over... This whole plan, this whole concept, this technology that we're putting in for security wasn't even conceptualized at the time we were doing our three-year technology planning. So we just knew that we were going to continue to do our one-to-one initiative. We were going to utilize our connectivity, our new connectivity. We were confident in our wireless environments. And the piece that we really added was a STEM initiative, which you're seeing some example of some of those results here today, but that's continuing. And now with the development, we're in the process of developing our next three-year technology plan, which will incorporate a very strong security component. So all of these things are a process that go on over a long period of time. This particular... So we started that three years ago. Two years ago, we started the application for the Smart Schools initiative. And again, you're talking about a plan for using our Smart Schools money that was an application to get approval from the state to do this. So we didn't know, the state could have said, "Nope, you can't do that." And we went back to the drawing board, and we had to come up with a new plan. So it's not like going out with a capital project and saying, "Here we have this project, and we've got voter approval to do this." They said, "Nope, you've got this money to do this project. Here's a tech project. Let's send that to the state and see if they approve that." Well, it ended up taking two years for that approval process to take place. But we followed all of the steps needed, all of the requirements for that, and the plan was approved. So there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of false information that's been put out. But if you really want to understand the process, I think we'd be more than happy to discuss that at length at any time.
Thank you, Dr. La Puma.
Trustee Craig.
I have a question about... This predates my time on the Board.
I have a question about, this predates my time on the board. It sounds like you're using the word hearings for this presentation. Was it a public hearing or was it a board meeting?
This, this was a public hearing held in August of...
At a board meeting.
At a board meeting.
Just like your budget hearing was going to be held just prior to a board meeting.
Okay. And when we do that, we send communications out and there are communications for this one as well?
It has to be advertised.
Okay. Do you, would you like to hear from Mr. Kreider? He actually did the application process. He had to work with the state. Matt, can you just go over a little bit of putting through the application, the hoops that districts have to jump through before it can be approved? Your camera's right there, your audience is here in the board.
All right, thank you. So I believe we started early in 2016. We were just wrapping up the district-wide technology capital project, again, where we had over $5 billion allocated to address the network and IT infrastructure for the district. And then we learned that the state had voted up the $2 billion bond, and so we had to begin that process. First thing that the district asked my firm, ECC Technologies, and we're technology consultants, and we work directly for the district and we're paid for by the district. We developed an assessment plan looking at the condition of several systems and looking at what potentially would be eligible for SmartSchool funding. Some things were eligible, some things weren't. So we identified options and we shortlisted those down similar to this discussion we're having tonight. We filed, so we had the public hearing in August of 2016. We fine-tuned the final application. I think your slide said we had something like 3.97.
Yes.
It was slightly more than that. When we actually filed the application in December of 2016, it was $4 million, $10,000, $4 million, $10,833 to be exact, so an extra $50,000. So that went in December. And then it went into a black hole, went to state ed office with 700 other school districts and we got in the queue. And that took nearly 11 months, almost 12 months before we got approval. And until we got that approval, we weren't sure if we had, if this plan was intact. We may have been denied certain aspects of the plan and we would have had to adjust. And then we would have had to resubmit. And so fortunately, I think we did a good job on the due diligence, so we got, we got approved on the first round. So then in November, we moved forward and pulled all our bid documents together. And a couple of weeks ago, we got our bids in. The number's 3.3 million. But you're saying, well, we applied for four. So 3.3 is what we need the electrical contractor to do. For every capital project, we carry a contingency budget for unforeseen situations. So we're carrying about $300,000 for contingent items. Hopefully, we don't need it. In addition, so that gets us up to 3.6. There's a couple of hundred thousand dollars of network equipment and wireless equipment and visitor badging. That we're procuring through state contracts and through W, excuse me, Western New York BOSsies, Erie One BOSsies. And that's all within SCD guidelines and it's all appropriate way to procure these systems. So that gets us up to 3.8. Then there's A and E fees, architectural engineering fees, that have to be covered in any other consulting, bonding, legal, financial consulting. And that all wraps up to the $4 million. And then even above that, we still have another $264,000 in SmartSchool money that we're going to apply for what we're calling Phase Two. So we'll have to, you know, we'll have to prioritize what we want to spend that last quarter of a million on. So that's where we are today. I want to talk a little bit, because I know there's a concern about conflict of interest with consulting. I, I'm a district consultant. I'm paid for by the school district to design these technology systems, get them bid, and I project manage the installation. And I very much appreciate the work and that's how I get paid from the school district. Mr. Olivo's firm does not get paid by the school district. He gets paid through the manufacturer that he's representing. And he, I suspect, represents several. Me, as a consultant, I will talk to Tony's firm, I'll talk to the manufacturer that he's representing, to understand what they're proposing and see how that fits within our plan and our design. He doesn't get any money. That's, you know, his marketing and sales effort. I do the same with Cisco for our network equipment. I'll do the same with the telephone manufacturer that the district has. Something we haven't talked about, but we have nearly a million dollars earmarked to improve all the emergency communications. So it's one thing to see an event on video, but then we have to react to it. And so we have another system that's integrated with the video, and that's what we call our emergency communications lockdown system. And that does a couple of things. One, it upgrades all the old legacy public address equipment, but it combines that with the ability to shut down our doors, send out both audio and visual indications that we're in a lockdown situation. And then it gives us automated feedback as to what's the status of our rooms. So, so that's another aspect of the SmartSchool program that hasn't got a lot of attention, but really it's, it's a good benefit for the school. And that was able to save us a million dollars out of the other capital project that the school is doing for facility improvements. So I don't know what else I can mention.
I just want to clarify though, Matt. When you did do our other infrastructure project in...
In 2013 to 2015.
Yeah, 2013, 14, right. And we did bring Tony on to kind of do an overview, and we, the district did pay you directly, but from that point on, when we started building this, you are paid as a subcontractor through our architect, Troutman Associates?
Correct.
Because I'm not cutting checks to you.
Right. Yeah, that's a fine distinction, but yes.
So much like Mr. Olivo is a consultant for Essentec and the Aegis Software, they're paying him. Troutman is our architect, even though they're helping us with this, they're paying him, Kreider. It's not an unusual thing to have subcontractors charge fees to people helping you to do it. So I just, I just want to make, because we're not paying you directly. Somebody foiled those, I can't say.
No, I appreciate the distinction. So Troutman wouldn't be able to pay me unless you were paying them.
That's exactly right. Exactly.
One other clarification, back in August of 2016, we thought the high school PA system, the version of software was going to be compatible and we went after to replace it. And this is what happens in technology, two years later, that software is now obsolete. So included in that 3.3 bid is a complete replacement of the emergency communications for the high school as well. So it's an enhancement that we included.
And so a lot of the, the cost, the infrastructure cost really that Ferguson is doing, is really laying for every building, all the wiring and system setup for new cameras and all that installation that needs to be done prior to setting the system up for the new school year. So there's a timing issue here in terms of working with contractors and making sure that they have access to the school during times to get those things done so that they're ready for the school year. Would that be correct?
We always have that construction completed before the start of next year.
Right.
And this is important. It's processed, but you need to be aware of it. When, when we applied and to make sure that this 3.3 million that we're talking about tonight gets refunded to the district, is that we had to submit a comprehensive security system. The video analytics, the facial recognition software, that's one component of the overall surveillance video system. And to ensure that the state will aid that, they want to see a comprehensive system. It would have been, it may have been approved, but it, we had a lot more confidence that the state would approve if we did this as a comprehensive system. If we start pulling out components, we may put the reimbursement in jeopardy.
Right.
So that's an important distinction to remember.
Trustee send out.
Can you or Tony speak to some of the features of the system and thing, I know, you know, there was a comment made during the session earlier that, that, you know, maybe it could be foiled by a backpack or something like that. I understand there's certain limitations it might have, but can you speak to the positive aspect of what you could actually gain by having a system like this in place?
Tony's more knowledgeable on that, so I'll let him follow up. But I would like to point out that, you know, what we've been talking about is the ultimate worst case about trying to prevent a shooting. Terrible event and you try to be as proactive. And we all know it's, it's, there's always ways to beat a system. So yes, we want to be proactive with that. But this system does much more than prevent shootings. It also helps us with people that maybe perhaps have restraining orders, if there's, forensically, if we want to go into the database and, and search for whether or not someone was or was not on the premise during a certain event. So there's, there's a lot of practical things, and Tony will elaborate on it, that besides the ultimate worst case, you know, I think there's a lot more value that the district's going to get out of the system besides just hopefully doing a better job at deterring that type of violence.
Thank you.
So just to expound a little bit upon what Matt is talking about, the system itself is not just merely facial recognition, although that is one of the featured components of it. Some of the applications of the facial recognition technology, if you want to call it that, is we are able to take what we call an unwanted list and put that into a database. So the unwanted list doesn't only include, you know, somebody with a restraining order, it'll include sex offenders. If a sex offender walks into a school building, we'll be able to identify that person. It'll also be able to identify people who are fired employees, people that have restraining orders against, have expelled students, those type of things. So for instance, the tragedy that happened down in Parkland, Florida, was an expelled student. He walked into the building. When he walked into the building, this system would have been able to tell that he was on the premises. So those types of things are available to us. We can also do things with this system such as video fencing. I know one of the things that school districts like to use is the ability to have their buildings open after hours. You know, the gentleman that spoke earlier today rightfully so, talked about hardening the target. I talk about that all the time and I highly recommend it. But the reality of life is, part of our security assessments is, the school doors aren't locked. People walk in these doors all day long. Kids prop them open, they put a pin in it or something like that. Or how about this, at 2:30 in the afternoon, there's still 300 kids in your high school, but the doors are unlocked. So we have swim meets, we have all types of things going on. But we also like to allow our buildings to be used for after-hours activities. There's basketball leagues, there's those types of things. And I was telling the folks earlier tonight that we had a school district that had an incident where a teacher was alone in her classroom up on the second floor, 6 o'clock at night, the hallway lights are out, it's getting dark, she's in her own classroom alone, looks up, sees an individual standing in her doorway, it scares her. She then went to the superintendent and said, what are we going to do about securing the building? But the individual standing in her doorway was playing basketball in a basketball league downstairs. The kid had gone to school there and he had gone upstairs and walked around the building. Well, with this system, we're able to identify that person if he walked up those stairs and able to send an alert to the janitor that's on duty or the staff member that might be on duty. And in your district, you do have security after hours. So we were, we are able to send an alert to someone to say, somebody's in an area they shouldn't be. So that's the first part of it. With respect to the weapons recognition part of it, yes, I'll agree with the gentleman that if there's a gun in a backpack, it's not going to tell you that. If there's a gun under your coat, it's not going to tell you that. However, a gun in a backpack or a gun under your coat's not going to hurt someone. What happens is this system identifies weapons in hand. So it will identify weapons in hand. What we did is we did an analysis of the mass shootings over the past 20 years. There's been 12 different firearms that we utilized. And we took all of those 12 firearms and built a database of those firearms. And so with that, we're able to identify those types of weapons in someone's hand. So again, that's part of the system. And the other part that we just talked about is video forensics. We're able to look through this, the recordings of the school district or the DVR system and interrogate that system to find if there's an incident. Like we often do investigations where there's allegations against a teacher, for instance. If somebody says a teacher did something, we can take a teacher's photograph and a child's photograph and we can put it into this database and we can say, tell me where they've been together on camera or where a camera's seen them for the past three days or any time. So we can interrogate the DVR system without sitting there for hours looking through video to find that one second. The other thing it will do is it will identify packages. There's certain parts of the technology that will identify packages that aren't separated from a body or that type of thing. But if there was a backpack found in a building, like Mr. Switek's here, he's got a wonderful, beautiful briefcase. If that were found in a hallway somewhere and it was opened up and it didn't have any identifiers of Mr. Switek's and it did have a gun or a pound of marijuana or something in it, we could take out a smartphone, we can videotape that and it will tell us who brought that into the building by going through the NVR system. So there's a lot more applications to this technology than just facial recognition.
Anything else? Trustee go back, Matt.
Thanks, Tony.
Thus far, we haven't really completely answered the question regarding your involvement actively. So to be clear about that, from what you've stated earlier, you approached this company, right?
Correct.
To develop a system specifically for schools.
Correct.
And then you're championing that system. How could it not be misconstrued when you have a personal vested interest in this?
Well, people's opinions are theirs. I can't change people's opinions, but it can be misconstrued, I don't know. But what I will tell you is, yes, I am championing it. And yes, I'm very passionate about this product because there are other products out there that do this type of thing. In fact, Matt and I were talking about it earlier. There's actually four other people in the facial recognition space, but that's all they do. We've talked to those companies. Our job as consultants is to bring the best products and programs that we can to a board or a school district or a hospital or, there's other entities that this technology is being used for, not just schools. And to help them develop that for that purpose. So, yeah, I'm very passionate about it, but as far as people's perception, I just don't really get caught up in that, to be frank with you. I just want our kids to be safe. And just as an aside, I think I told you this earlier, I've been talking about this since 2003 when my oldest daughter was in kindergarten and we saw one of our schools, and my team is all former federal agents in law enforcement, by the way, so we have a background in this. I tried to get my daughter's school district to lock the doors when she was in kindergarten. And we offered to do free assessments for them and bring in wholesale equipment and do the whole nine yards. And nobody listened to us. And it took Sandy Hook for somebody to listen to us. So, yeah, I am very passionate about it, so I hope that answers your question.
If I could add, because of this whole consulting thing, Tony's definitely a champion of his, of his solution. And he's, has a financial interest in that from the manufacturer.
Well, can I just clarify something? I don't have a financial interest in this company. I know you've said that a couple of times. I don't have a financial interest in the company. I do get paid as a consultant by them to help them with the strategic applications of this technology, but I do not have a financial interest in this company.
So if there was a background that had similar technology, a better, you champion them?
That's a great question. And yes, I actually pointed out to you earlier, I think, there is another company that sells a technology that does just facial recognition. And they are very big in the government space. In fact, they are deployed in several schools around the country. And I have talked to those people. However... However, their technology is nowhere near this, and I actually had them run a quote for your school district. And so I will compare, I can't compare apples to apples for you, but I will compare apples to oranges for you. This technology, if we deployed it in the same manner as we are proposing this, the Aegis system, would cost the Lockport School District over a five-year period $2,798,600. And that is without cameras. The Aegis system is $1.4 million, and that is with cameras. So there's a huge difference.
The other, the other thing is, as the district's technology subconsultant, the Trautman, my company, it's my job to be skeptical of Tony's solution. So I had to, I had to research it. I went to the world's largest security conference, they have it every year out at Las Vegas. I went in 2016, and I went in 2017. And both times, I spent a lot of time talking to security manufacturers, video surveillance manufacturers, asking them if they had a program similar to this for school districts or for any, for any commercial, non homeland security type application. And I could not find, I found several that target casinos, I found several that target airports, and of course, homeland security counterterrorism. And I approached them. I said, "What would it take for you to adapt your applications to K-12?" And, you know, some of them weren't even interested in that. I had a few that were. There was a developer out of Boston, there was another one out of Arlington, Texas. But it would have been very expensive. They would have had to customize their software for this district and look to recoup that on one project, and it would have been easily two or three, you know, we, they were talking orders of magnitude of five to 10 million, just for project implementation. So that convinced me that, you know, this, there wasn't another commercially available system. And I talked to the predominant, and I do security consultants, consulting for dozens of school districts, and Genetek, Vigilant, Pelco, Video Insights, these are all predominant security systems in Western New York, well represented by contractors in Western New York. None of them had this kind of a program. So knowing that this was of interest to the board and to the district, we really did come to the realization that we needed a sole sort. If we wanted this solution, and if we wanted it in a relatively short time period of one or two years, we felt this was our best option. Just how we got here today is, I want to give a little background.
And to that, you said it briefly, Matt, but that led to a standardization resolution that the Board of Education acted on with our attorneys preparing it for us, because we couldn't just have an equivalent system in there, because there really was no equivalent system, so.
And, I already wrote this up, but last fall of 2017, the district did put out an RFP to do a video pilot project at the high school with this application identified, and it was publicly advertised, and the only, I believe the only solution we received was the SNTX solution.
Yes.
So that's your best indicator that if there was something commercially available, we would have, we would have heard, or they would have presented themselves last fall.
Trustee here.
I think it's been well established that I'm a nervous personality, so I'm, I'm nervous about being first, because we don't know what bugs are going to come up, what, you know, process issues we're going to have. So in that respect, I'm a little nervous, but maybe you can help me feel better about one thing, is how, how do we get into the, it's a closed-loop system, right? So if, if we want to get the face of someone who's been expelled into that system, or somebody on the sex offender registry list or something, how does that happen, and how fast can that happen?
So there's probably a lot more technologically brilliant people in here than me, but I can give you the fundamental aspect of it. Number one, you can put a subject into the system in seconds. It can be done two different ways. Video, so if someone were to, let's say someone were to go into a school and cause commotion and walk out the door, if Dr. La Puma or one of the technicians shot us a three-second video clip of that, or they could take that person's video, it would be in the system just that quick. The other way to do it is the way we've done it with Mrs. Schrader, is give us the digital photographs of the individual and the data, and we're able to put that person in there. We will be training your technicians here to how to do that quickly. We've worked with the Lockport Police Department to upload sex offenders into the database, so they're already in the database. But it's, as quick as we can get the photograph or the video clip, it's in there. As far as the closed loop...
Like, it can't be hacked, because it's not connected?
No, I mean, whatever security system you have in the school is in place in this system. So it's not like this system, it doesn't go outside the school. So basically, for the, a quick overview is, it captures the video stream before it gets to the DVR system. So it captures the video stream, it goes through the database of individuals or weapons that are in that system, and it goes to the NVR. So if there's no hacking abilities for this system...
I think I'm wrong, Matt, but that particular system runs on its own network. It's not running a graphic that the district is running our normal educational...
I mean...
I mean, it's, it's the same wiring, but it's a different...
Yeah, I mean, if the North Koreans focused on Lockport and really tried hard to hack the system, could they get in? Probably.
But they'd have to get in every school district.
You know, when I say we collectively, between our network design, Rob's operational, and with Bozzi's support, we have rigorous firewalls, we have security protocols, but no, I, I would not say that someone potentially couldn't hack in. It would be difficult, they would have to be extremely motivated and very good at it.
But Home Depot could get hacked into the...
Everyone gets hacked, yes. So I, I don't want to just lead you to say it's not possible. The, the other thing, because you said you're nervous, and you should be. Everyone should be skeptical, everyone should be careful when we're talking about millions of dollars. And one of the things we do as architects and engineers on these capital projects is we require the contractors to put up 100% performance bond. So at the end of the day, if they're unable to perform and produce the system as we had asked and specified for, they have to make it right, or we go after their bond to get our money back. Nobody wants to go there, but there's a reason why we ask for these bonds, is to give us that legal and financial protection. You know, yeah, it's worst case, we don't expect that. I've rarely ever, I've only in 22 years gone after one bond, but that's why we have them.
So another bug that, or issue that could come up, are there privacy issues with the system? Has any lawsuit ever...
No, there's no privacy issues, because it's wherever you can legally place a camera, the system can be. So it's, as long as your cameras are placed legally in areas where they can be, there's no privacy issues.
We have no cameras in any classrooms. I want to make sure everyone understands that.
There's no cameras in this room.
That's a, you know, that's a labor issue. That's policy, whether they should or shouldn't be, but there, you know, our corridors are well covered, our building entrances are well covered, some of the exterior where people congregate and funnel into the buildings are covered. And again, we're adding 300 cameras with this project to not only increase the coverage, but to increase the resolution, so we get a better image of the person. So it just makes the software that much more accurate.
And I'd just like to address something you said in the previous question about being the first.
Yeah.
You're not the first. You're the first school.
Right.
But you're not the first deployment of the technology. The technology has been deployed successfully in several places throughout the world, just per school.
But it did have to be reconfigured and adapted to a school set...
No, the basic foundations of the technology have always been there, and have been proven and vetted for several places. There's different applications that we added for the school aspect, yes, so.
I just have one more question. I really kind of want to log on this, but will the visitor badging system, with that recognition when someone scans a visitor's badge, would that be encrypted over to the surveillance camera, so that we have a database of people that visit the, each building? Is that cross-reference in any way, Tony or, or Matt?
At this time, that's not set up like that.
Okay.
But with the visitor badges, if you all have badges on, that's one of the things we make sure that the school districts do.
Right.
One of the concerns is and has been, like, if a badge gets lost or something of that nature, if I swipe your badge, and we have a camera that's got your face in it, or it won't let me in the building. So any badges that get stolen or lost, we can automatically tell if it's not that person using the badge. But it's not, it won't integrate with, are you talking about TPAS or Raptor?
Raptor.
Raptor, okay, will not integrate with Raptor.
Okay. That was also one question I had, because people are coming out and they're already taking their driver's license, and you're scanning it to produce a visitor badge. Are they scanning the person's image in terms of their face, so you have that as part of a database, these people that are in the building? It's housed somewhere, that database information, because it's housed somewhere in...
Whether it's in those systems or it's in a computer standalone system.
Do those cross-reference? That's just my question. Does it?
Not yet.
Okay.
But I will say this, and I'm not sure about the resolution of a New York State photo.
Right.
Or how well that would match against the database.
Right.
But it gives us a great opportunity when we do the visitor badging. That person has to stand there, and it's a great place to locate a high-resolution camera. And to that respect, we will capture that person.
Makes sense.
So we, we have high resolution as you walk in through, because we, we funnel all visitors through one entrance. That will be well-covered by cameras. And then they are immediately directed to the Raptor badging, and there'll be a second camera there to, to capture that as well, so.
Thanks, guys. That's a great point. That's what I was going to add, that the driver's license photograph will not work, but if we have a camera there, we can build that database.
We can build that database.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Further, further questions? None? Okay. Great job.
There was a child, there was a father suffering.
Ms. Coder, action item number eight under... Just those two guys again. Before we take action, are there any students out there that need paperwork signed? We're about quarter to nine. If you need paperwork signed, please come up front.
Oh, there's three, three ones.
So you guys can get out of here.
They're white, they're short straws.
You know, yeah, that's good.
No, no. Thank you.
Largely yes. I'd have to check before, to say 100%.
You know, you guys have a lot of study right before the holiday?
Actually, a lot of projects.
No.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good gracious.
You're welcome. There's so many things, it's careless to do so. Yeah. It's very shooty. Okay. Back to action items, number eight, business matters. We have before the board, number eight, award contracts for the Smart School project. Ms. Coder, could you please refresh my memory?
Yeah, a motion by trustee Sandell and a second by trustee O'Batt.
Okay. We had discussion, is there any further discussion by this board before we vote? None? And action item number eight, to award contracts for the Smart Schools project. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. B, personnel. Gentlemen, if, you're free, you're free to go at this point, if you'd like to leave.
Thank you.
We do appreciate, we do appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Nice job.
Next that I'm on the agenda tonight, we have, still under action items, we have personnel, number one, appointments ready for students and others. I have one through six, dated March 23rd, 2018, and then the motions were approved. Trustee O'Batt, I need a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Also under personnel, we have seven through eight, dated March 28th, 2018. I need a motion, please. Trustee O'Batt, I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Craig, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Under C, Educational Services, we have a field trip to be approved. Lockport High School, approximately 45 students, members of the Lockport High School Concert Choir to Toronto, Ontario, Canada, from Saturday, April 28th to Sunday, April 29th, 2018. I need a motion, please. Trustee Feo, second. Trustee O'Batt, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Under C, Educational Services, we have a field trip to be approved. Lockport High School, approximately 45 students, members of the Lockport High School Concert Choir to Toronto, Ontario, Canada, from Saturday, April 28th to Sunday, April 29th, 2018. I need a motion, please. Trustee Feo, second. Trustee O'Batt, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. D, under Special Re, we have one, Committee on Preschool, Special Education, and two, Committee on Special Education. I need a motion, please.
Solute.
Trustee O'Batt, I need a second. Trustee Craig, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next that I'm on the agenda tonight, legislative update. Trustee O'Batt.
Can I have everyone go home and read it? I'm just kidding.
You may keep it shut.
Um, I just got a second here. All right. So the first one was a law passed moving primary day from September 11th to September 13th for voting, so just a heads up for the schools. And then the next one was an update for New York State Board of Education, and it's loading really quickly, but you can go to the website. It's got a lot of good information in there that I can't remember. It's loading, just one moment.
New York State testing, parent guides?
Yes. Okay, thank you. New York State testing is being updated, I believe, and there is, just a little second. I should have, I already read these.
Your message from the commissioner, his support of the walkout on March 14th.
Yes. Thank you for reading it.
I did read it.
I did read it.
My way better.
We all know.
Okay. And then, yeah, the final thing that wasn't mentioned yet was a clinical practice work group meetings and the survey that came through with that, but it's a, you can find everything that I speak on, on their websites, for the bills and laws that I had talked or voted in, you can go to New York State... English testing, and then proposal for new teaching certificates to allow certain licensed health professionals to teach health education, which I think is interesting. And then also supporting our kids on the walkout and encouraging them to be more involved in politics and in their lives. And in New York State protects transgender students, so despite what is happening nationally, New York State, of course, puts our students first. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is board president's comments. I just have a couple, keep them brief. First of all, I'd like to really thank Mr. Schultz. He's inquired about our security project and raised some questions and concerns, which prompted tonight's discussion. I hope we answered all of his questions. The school district did have the union sun in on at least two occasions to address questions that Mr. Schultz had, and we tried to answer them and be as upfront as we could. And again, I want to thank the gentlemen for being here tonight, for helping us answer those questions. The student walkout on March 14th, I did catch a video of the walkout, at least a part of it. I think our students really made us proud. They did a terrific job. It was taken very seriously, and the speakers that I saw did a terrific job. So I'd like to commend them for participating. And with that, recess after tomorrow. Happy Easter. Committee of the Hall. Trustee Figo, you don't get to start because I'm not, I hate this. I'm not giving you that break. I'm all set. Trustee Craig.
I want to thank the girls from Emmett Belknap that gave us the robotics presentation. You know, 22 years ago, I started Tech Wars at NCCC, long before STEM and STEAM was even a thought. And so I worked with Mike Liebler and some of the staff here in technology. It's just nice to see what started out as three districts and three kids, three young men participating, to be, including young women and from middle school, because getting them into the education pipeline early in terms of technology, it's nice to see that being embraced. I want to thank the students and all the staff that were involved in the musical this past weekend. I know that there was a lot of concerns. I'm happy for the students that were able to put on a production that the community enjoyed, and hope the next year we can continue to move those conversations forward. And want to wish all the spring sports teams good luck and good health into the spring sports season, and everybody have a joyous Easter and Passover break coming up. Thank you.
Trustee Obat.
Hi. Sorry, guys. I'm really tired. It's been like a really long day. But I wanted to say that I'm happy with all the discussions that I've heard regarding school safety. That's always been near and dear to my heart, even when I was a student. So I, it's good that I, to see our school moving in a much, much better direction. When I was in high school, I think our safety was close to doors, and we need a little bit more than that these days. So I really got to see that. I'm also glad that the public is so invested in our schools. That's good to see, and I hope that we're invested in other issues as well, not just about money, because we want to make sure that our kids are fully educated to face the world in the future after they graduate. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Sandell.
Thank you. I'd like to commend superintendent, your staff, and my fellow board members for always taking all the issues that we deal with here seriously. This issue on security, I know it was addressed as one issue here, and I thank Mr. Schultz for bringing it up, because it's really good that we had an opportunity to think about these, the decision we were making with a lot more, you know, analysis and looking at it more tough. But at the end of the day, our committees that, you know, that review these, they do a lot of work, a lot of work to find out all the information and really run it by a lot of people, you know. And it's always interesting when you listen to somebody like Mr. Schultz and you hear his perspective, you learn something from listening to him. And then when you hear the experts talk about these systems, you learn from them. And so you always got to go deeper into every situation to really understand what it is. And I commend everyone here for being serious about all the issues we deal with. So thank you.
Trustee Obat.
I just want to thank the people that did reach out, just the community members that did reach out to the board, had a time for tonight with their concerns, because that's what we're here for. You know, I know not everybody can make the meetings, but we are here via email. You can call us, you know, because meeting times are not always good for everybody. And I just hope everybody has a great break.
Trustee here.
I think this was a valuable exercise as a new board member. I didn't get the in-depth presentations and the development of the plan, especially the facilities committee and the dedication they put into it. So this was really helpful for me. I think I'll always just be nervous with whatever decision we make, but I feel a lot better about it now. So I appreciate having everybody come in and how seriously they took all of our questions, even though probably mine were repetitive, since they probably already addressed it with the previous board. I guess, and that's it.
Trustee Figo.
Thank you, Lisa, for the demonstration. This is the beginning of the robotics, and then we take it on to the high school. These girls seem very thrilled and they're part of it. Just goes to show what the district was able to provide. Also, congratulations to the cast of the play. I was only able to make two nights, but you could see from what I understand, Friday night is the learning process for them. Saturday night, they felt a little better, and Sunday, they enjoyed what they were doing. They really put everything together, except they almost dropped my grandson. There was some controversy over the situation there, and those kids pulled it together as a team. And that's, you can pick that up. You can pick that up, that they were working for one another. And that was a joy to see, because our superintendent pitched in and got us something that we didn't think we were going to have. We were able to offer it to our kids, and they pulled it together. So kudos to them. I think this spring, very shortly, we get a break in the weather, you're going to hear construction vehicles around here and out on Beatty Avenue. I'm looking forward to that. So spring starts a new season for everybody, including the board. We've got a lot to look forward to. We've got the budget that appears to be right on schedule. Thank you, Devon. Thank you, Shelley. Thank you, Lisa, and everybody else that had a hand in it. It's something that we can understand, we can look at it and make our opinions. A lot of people don't understand that, they think it's just easy to put together. But when you start working on it last year, and when this budget voted on it, the next day, you're immediately working on the next budget. So there's a lot involved. Your board members appreciate it, I know I do. And it wasn't warm where I was all the time, so I wasn't enjoying it at all. But, yeah, I had a light bulb. But in Crystal River, Florida.
It was better there than where we were.
Crystal River.
You had us right up until that point.
Crystal River, Florida, 2009, the rain. That's cold.
One day.
Well, one day, if you were up in Crystal River, you wouldn't appreciate it. I thank the board for everything that they've done this year to get us to this point. It's full speed ahead from here. We're security projects, and we're good to go, very good to go. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Figo. Mrs. Bradley, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Andrew. March is Music in Our Schools Month, a time when the Lockport City School District recognizes its music department members, programs, and talented students. One of the highlights of the district is the musicals that have been recently presented throughout many of our schools. And they include North Park Junior High School, The Wizard of Oz, which was in early March; Emmett Belknap Intermediate School, James and the Giant Peach, which was mid-March; Lockport High School, How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying, late March, last weekend, actually; and Roy B. Kelly, The Lion King Kids, will be presented April 19th and April 20th. Kudos to our talented students from third grade all the way up to 12th grade, and special thanks to our music department chairpersons, our teachers, and musical directors for a job well done. National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association, we have several students recognized for this achievement. Daniel Fogel, Benjamin Flaherty, Matthew O'Donnell, Sebastian Lasher, and Christian Martin have recently been designated by the National Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association, is Academic All-American for the 2017-18 Swimming and Diving Season. Over 342,000 students were involved in aquatics at the high school level in over 16,432 programs for boys and girls. Approximately 2% of these students are recognized as high school All-Americans. In order to qualify, a student athlete must attain a weighted or unweighted GPA of 93.750 over seven semesters of academic performance, and these five students from Lockport High School achieved that. Upon graduation, Ben will be attending SUNY Geneseo to enroll in pre-med studies; Christian will be enrolling at the University of Buffalo to pursue a career as a pharmacist; Sebastian is deciding between RPI and Norwich to study architecture; Matt will be attending SUNY Oswego, my alma mater, with the goal of becoming a social studies teacher; and Dan will be at Damon as part of their Physicians Assistant Program. In addition to these individual accolades, the Boys varsity swim team was recently recognized as a New York State Scholar Athlete Team. So congratulations to the team and these individual students for some pretty significant achievements in their high school career. And thank you to the coaches, especially John Sullivan, for support and guidance in building the program within the district and strong character within our student athletes. And what else do I have? Skills USA, the Niagara Career in Technical Education Center, wanted to take a moment to recognize the winners of the Area Skills One, Area One Skills USA Regional Competition. On Tuesday, March 6th, students from the Niagara Career in Technical Education Center completed in 38, competed in 38 competitions against other BOCSs in Alfred and Wellsville. The Niagara County Technical Education Center proudly walked away with nine first-place winners, five second-place winners, and four third-place winners. And from Lockport, in the Culinary Arts Competition, Lilian Waklim was the first-place winner in the program Culinary Arts Two. So congratulations to Lilian. And then finally, school will be closed from Friday, March 30th to Friday, April 6th. School will resume on Monday, April 9th for the final stretch of the 2017-18 school year. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradley. Next item on our agenda tonight is view of public forum, items of general interest, and we have no speakers. And before we adjourn, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Bronson, congratulations. He's the new president, I believe, takes effect June 1st.
That's correct.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, need a motion to adjourn. Trustee Obat, that was quick. Discussion, notice, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming today. have our speakers. And before we adjourn, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Bronson, congratulations. He's the new president, I believe, takes effect June 1st.
That's correct.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Trusty O'Vann, that was quick. Discussion, no discussion, please. All in favor? Aye. Thank you for coming today.